Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone that is here with us today in council chambers, as well as those joining us via Zoom tonight. We will move right along into our agenda. Is there a motion on the floor to adopt the agenda? Motion to approve is our second.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion has carried. Thank you very much. At this time, I would like to welcome Reverend Meg Skidmore of Harrisburg Presbyterian Church to lead our invocation this evening.
I bring you greetings from your friends and neighbors at Harrisburg Presbyterian Church, and it's an honor to be here. I thank you for the invitation. Let us pray. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders your people need. Help us see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us. And to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, Holy One, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of all people. We ask this as your children, confident in your goodness and love. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Skidmore, for being here this evening. This time, would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Not have any special presentations this evening, and we did not have anyone sign up for public comments. Is there anyone that was unable to sign up here that would like to speak? We'll go to those in the room first. And then is there anyone on the Zoom call? This time, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Is there a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda as presented this evening? Motion to approve. Is there a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion has carried. Thank you. Start with our town manager report.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Community. Just a few updates for this evening. I know we've been anticipating the Main Street, at least I have been anticipating, Main Street paving since I drive it every morning. And there are a few potholes developing. That should be starting next week. We did get a request from the contractor. I know it was this week, but they have requested next week. So I think we would still anticipate next week right now. For those that drive it, just know that'll be very busy and a lot of the parking will be blocked off. So if you have any questions, contact Mallory and Public Works. You'll be happy to communicate the plan there. Also wanted to give an update and kudos to staff on the Fourth of July event. Our staff did a remarkable job of running that event. I certainly don't want Jim to get too overinflated here. So I'll say his staff instead of Jim, but no, Jim and his staff worked. I mean, I just asked Jim when he left on the Fourth, and you know, it was after 1:00 AM on the Fourth, Jim was still there just picking up trash because on the Fifth, our standards are we don't want the park to be dirty even for a day. So our staff stayed all night, cleaned up all the trash. We're the deputies and fire were able to get. I think we had almost 30,000 people there on the Fourth out within about an hour and a half, which was much better than I anticipated. I certainly didn't go off completely without a hitch, but for as many folks as we had there, I don't think it could get a heck of a lot better. From a numbers standpoint, Jim will be bringing up, you know, financial numbers and actual attendance numbers and everything at the next meeting. But just preliminarily, it looks like with the two-day total, we had about 35,000 people attend the event, which is a really large number considering the first day was about, about half of the day was a rainout. So nobody was able to really come, and that probably kept a lot of people away first day. But compared to last year, we had about 25,000 total attendance, and this year 35,000. I also think that that Fourth of July attendance number is probably about our max capacity. So we're gonna kind of focus on quality and not quantity moving forward. We'll have some debriefs with staff just on making the event and holding up to the standards that we expect here. But I don't know that we could get a whole heck of a lot more people in that park in a safe manner. So that's something that we're aware of, and we'll be given a brief to council on that at next meeting should be ready. As we know, Sushil has left, and so that leaves our opening at the Sustainability Advisory Board. Coming up with a liaison, that was a request to find out who that was going to be at the last meeting. For the time being, that's going to be the big guy on my left here. Leroy is going to represent us until he can find some staff. Unfortunately, we have a lot of staff out right now, just replacing the planning director, replacing the public works director, communications director, just had Baby Addy, and she'll be out for about six weeks. So congratulations to April and Jamie. This Jamie's Jay Woodall. And so Jamie Woodall has been filling in. In the meantime, that's something that we had set up ahead of time, but a temp employee or a contract employee doesn't necessarily fit the mold of a liaison. So we'll be keeping the fort down until we are able to assign that to another department head. And you see Zach here at the dais for his first meeting. So you guys are familiar with Zach. He'll be doing the first presentations tonight and filling in for Sushil until we're able to fill the planning director position. Congratulations to, isn't quite official yet. I don't see him in the back of the room. But Lieutenant Miesmer, starting July 15th, will be Captain Miesmer, and he'll head up the Harrisburg Police Division through the Sheriff's Department. And as soon as we get the rest of the contract done, he'll be able to fill out those other positions that he has there. So certainly excited for soon to be Captain Miesmer. He has earned it. He spent a career at the Sheriff's Department in all kinds of roles, and we're lucky to have him here heading up our division. We did fill the position of supervisor for customer service. So if you guys get a chance, that'll be in the weekly updates. You get pictures and and all that internally. But if you get a chance, stop in at customer service. Becca Hacker started today. She will be settling in and learning everybody, but if you guys are around, please give her a welcome. She's doing a great job. And I know Brian's really excited to fill out the staff there and quit doing the the nightly banking and closeout and everything. And then we're gonna do an update on the water shut off on Stallings Road. I'm gonna let Mallory, who's much more in the know about that. I know some door hangers went out today and like they got laid on, some got laid on steps, so they might not get seen. So Mallory, you want to give a quick update?
We typically do the door hangers in-house with our own staff, but we pushed this off on the contractor, and they made an epic failure of it. So we actually gave them the door hangers. Some of them had like nine to question mark, some had nine to noon. What's gonna happen is they're gonna be connecting the water line, going to the school. It's just a tie-in. It just takes a couple hours. But they do have to cut the valves off at either end. So there is a potential for for some water cutoff. It's a small area that's affected. It's basically Hoffner to, it doesn't even go all the way to Stallings Farm. So as they make those tie-ins, it's probably around nine. It could be on as early as 11, but probably till noon at the latest. And that'll happen Friday, weather allowing. As soon as I started getting calls this morning, pretty early, as they were dropping off those. So as a lesson learned for us, we will handle that in-house moving forward and not lean on the contractors for that. And then this is associated with the Camilla Gardens roundabout widening. So that's what they're doing there. Making sure that water line is outside of the roadway as they're done with construction. And then I've also gotten with Jamie to post something on social media. Stallings Farm is from Hoffner to just basically just past where the roundhouse is going. And it's a pretty small area, and I've got a map that'll go on social media as well. I think she's gonna post that tomorrow. So.
Wait one minute. Will there be, when we turn the water back on, will people expect any air dirt or anything? Is there anything we need to do? Okay, just making sure.
Thank you, Mallory.
That's it for managers update. If council has any questions.
Hey, Rob, I got a question. I got a question and a comment. I saw our Park and Rec Division has always done a great job at the park. Everybody we've ever had, I think so. In my 11 years on council, 31 years living here, they've done a great job. But I thought by when everybody said, I just thought when everybody said how good everything's happened with the park and how many people were there, we had a steakhouse coming to town. I mean, if we ain't making money on that park, people coming there, why do we care how many people's coming? Half the people didn't want the park when we did it. So I'm just confused on that. I'm totally fine. Glad people came. It's great. Jim's great. Park and Rec Director, Park and Rec Staff is awesome. My second thing is, when are we gonna hire a public works director? How long are we gonna wait for that? And how long do you think we're gonna wait to hire somebody to replace you, Sheila? I'll just sit back and listen.
Sure. On the first one, I guess my comments for the park are limited to operational. So the, I guess the point of my update bringing it on is that, given the resources and the assets that we have for the park, I thought staff and the town pulled off a remarkable event. I think it's something to be proud of. And it's certainly something that is attracting both tourism and pride within the community. So that was my point on that. Now, the other stuff associated with it, I really don't have any comment on. As far as hiring the two directors that are missing, we've had the public works one advertised since March. Excuse me. First couple review of applications were not in line with the quality of candidate we're looking. So we're looking in-house at, do we need someone to help us with this search? And do we need somebody to throw a bigger net than we're able to do here? When we got the news of the planning director leaving as well, we thought that might be a good opportunity to use the same process for both. So that is something that the management team and HR are working on a plan on how we're going to fill that and whether we need that consultant help currently. I hope that answered the question.
That did. Thank you. I just, I mean, we just had such great success with our park and rec for as long as I can remember. You know, I mean, I didn't really understand, you know, we had COVID the last couple of years. COVID's still here now. So I mean, all these people coming to town, the traffic, everything. I mean, I was there. I was good with it, but you know, my deal is, what about the money? How much money we spending? Because to me, I don't care if it's 35,000, 15,000. I mean, it's great, but is it, were we making any money? And I know the answer to that. So I'm fine with it. I'm just saying, I thought we were getting a steakhouse in town center by everyone's comments about how great the park was, why people were there. So I'll leave a go at that. I'm fine. I just want to make my voice heard on that.
Yes, sir.
I did have one question, and it's just more of a logistics question. Is it based on the Fourth this year, does it make more sense if we start removing the parking from Z-Mats, push out to more and start busting those?
Yeah, those are all things that we're gonna go through with the management debrief. Parking, length of the event, opening ceremonies, when that happens, when the parade, I mean, we're gonna look at a full understanding of, you know, if this is going to be this big of, I mean, when you have 30,000 people at a single day, that's a signature of that. That's a really large crowd. And we need to think about, you know, what comes with that and what other peripheral issues are we getting? I know we had parking over at the cemetery and at Lamb's Dental and at other places because people just, more people wanted to come in and couldn't get there. So people just started kind of abandoning cars at whatever business or open spot where they could get their car, which, you know, is a sign that, a good sign that people want to come in, but we have to address that as a staff on how do we make it safe and viable.
Did we get any complaints from businesses that were impacted? I mean, you said folks abandoned cars. I'm sure they've let some of them let message or whatever. These businesses didn't sign up for that morning.
Yeah, we didn't get any complaints that I'm aware of. Lee or Jim have any, but for the most part, all the feedback we got was really positive. Our staff does go around and clean up the next day, 49. And so if there's parking lot debris, that's something that our street sweepers and and our crews would go out and pick up as well. So I wouldn't anticipate that, those complaints coming in. But I was worried for businesses that might be open.
Yeah. Also, that night, one of the reasons we are there so late, we did many of the 49 businesses adjacent to park entrances. That's we make sure we spend some time doing that. It's not perfect, but at least it gives us through till the morning when the rust is that tight.
So good to know. And most of the businesses I find appreciate just the extra volume coming through. But if you're, if you're an appointment-based business, or maybe you're you're a private business and you're concerned about any damage to your parking lot or something like that, you're not a franchise, so to speak, then, you know, those are concerns from us and things that we'll go over with our staff to see how do we minimize that? Or if it's, you know, some of the other businesses, you know, some of the restaurants locally owned and stuff that aren't open that day, maybe talking with them as well about using their parking lots and/or if they want to open their businesses, certainly they would, they would get a lot of traffic that day.
I did receive one ask out that weekend, and it was on the Fourth, if we could, if it was feasible to open up the food vendors at noon. Just because on the Fourth, it was very limited food opportunities in Harrisburg. I think City Grill was open, Three Monkeys was open, sandwich shops, and that's probably about it. I don't know what's the agreements are, but it's all that's a rule.
Appreciate it. Any other questions for me?
Thank you, Rob. Brian, you were up with the finance report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Hope James will get my PowerPoint up here. He's not back. There he is. Thank you, sir. All right. So this is our finance report as of June 30th, '22, to round out our fiscal year. So this is before we make any of our adjustments in July and August, as some of our accounts payable comes in. So these are what I would call preliminary numbers, but they are going to be very close to our final numbers that you'll see in the presentation in December when we wrap up the audit and have the financial statements compiled. So I would call these, you know, 99% accurate numbers for our fiscal year. So looking at our revenues for operations, the general fund came in at 106% of total budget, based on tax collections at 104% for the year. So really excellent collections across the general fund, across the board, all of our different revenue categories. The Water and Sewer Fund is at 97% for the fiscal year, 10% in the last month. So that's what we expect to see is that volume of sales pickup as people are irrigating their yards. We have another two-thirds of a month to accrue back into the year. And so that Water and Sewer Fund revenue should tick to about 100, 101%. The Stormwater Fund is already sitting at 100%, but it also gets that accrual. So we'll be at 102, 103%. So revenue for the town was really, really strong this year, and we didn't have any areas of concern for our budgets heading into next year. Departmental expenditures for the general fund, all of our general government departments ended the year in green. The closest one to 100% is Town Clerk at 93%. She also has the smallest budget on the screen. So really, really happy with everyone's spending control this year and happy with the performance there. Same across the rest of our general fund departments and into the Enterprise Fund, which is Water and Sewer and Stormwater at 82% and 61%. Across the entire town, we're at about 80, 85% budget utilization for the year. So I'm very pleased with those numbers, and we didn't have anyone run up on a concern as we rounded out the fiscal year. Salaries townwide, we're at 90% of our budget heading into the year. Any questions on operations? All right, we have a bit of an abbreviated project report here. Our single-year projects, the deputy office expansion, this should be one of the last times you hear about this. As I've said before, the interior of the building has been done, and they're working out of that. The only thing that we have left right now is the parking lot and the sidewalk. And then that project will be completed. The station number one warning light is a project that we're carrying over into fiscal year '23, and you will see that construction contract next month. The Harrisburg Elementary School Road is being worked on right now. The utilities are being moved. The, it's in conjunction with the roundabout and stormwater and grading have already been performed on that project. The spring and summer paving is underway right now. So that's another project that's going to carry over into July into the new fiscal year. And that's it for our single-year projects. For multi-year projects under design, not much to mention here. We did have a lot of movement on the transportation bonds, just getting those started with the consultant, either getting the survey or the design contract underway. And you have a couple that are on the agenda tonight to start progressing with. Our projects in construction right now, I only have one to comment on here, and that is the transportation bonds sidewalks along Caldwell Road. Those are finished now. We resolved everything with NC DOT and actually paved the entire lane that touches that sidewalk going down Caldwell. So really good-looking project there and happy to get that one completed under the bonds. The rest of these are multi-year projects, and they're carrying on into this fiscal year. For our equipment projects, we've been sitting here at 100% on all the equipment for the year, except for the generator that is being carried over to the next fiscal year. So we'll see that Bentley Hills generator on the '23 report. But other than that, all of these equipment projects were completed. Vehicle projects, much the same that we've seen for a number of months here. Our fire vehicles have all been received or are very close to being received. They've actually made it to the dealerships or are in our hands. So what's left on all of these vehicles is all the accessories and the outfit items to get those placed into service. The two that are in red are the administration vehicle and the bucket truck. Both of those have been carried over budget-wise. So we'll be looking for the administration vehicle in the next couple of months. And the bucket truck has been something that's been very tough to find, especially used. So we did roll over that project, and they're still continuing to look for something that fits what we need there without having to buy a new vehicle. And our professional services project, also the same that we've seen for a couple of months in a row now. So we'll roll this over for our new professional services projects in fiscal year '23, and that retail recruitment study was rebudgeted for during the budget process. So we'll pick back up on that. Also going on in finance, the fiscal year '22 audit, the interim field work has been completed. There were no issues or comments from the auditors or any areas of concern for them. We will spend the next two months preparing to write the financial statements, to make all of our accruals and close everything down for those statements, and then have our audit in early September. Powell Bill reporting is an extremely important report that we submit to the state every year to make sure we get our street resurfacing money. So that's been prepared by the engineering department and then submitted and certified by finance team. And so we will submit that in the next couple of days, now that it's been signed off on. And then your monthly ARPA update, no update to provide from previous months. We still have about four and a half million to appropriate that we will address as we move to fiscal year. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
I've got one. I haven't been bugging Jim on the far mill thing, because I knew they were gearing up for July 4th, but you probably have a little extra time. Maybe we can get that one going.
Yeah, we, every time we try to get that thing fired up, it seemed to, another priority kind of jumped in being a long-term project.
Right.
We just spoke today with Adam and Sean. That's like our second priority for this summer. As the, we have the 10-year recreation plan. So that's number one.
Excellent. Thank you.
Look for, reach out to you and dive in the next month.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Any other questions for Brian? Thank you, Brian. In the spirit of fairness, we're gonna shake it up just a little bit. We're gonna let Chief Dunn go first. So that, just be prepared for August. Me Smurfs first in August. Surprise.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. So a quick report for the month of June for Harrisburg Fire, 225 incidents. Average response time was four minutes and 19 seconds. Some of the highlights, we did have four structure fires. We did have three vehicle fires, 16 commercial fire alarms, two gas line breaks. And that's about the highlights. Some other MBAs were with injuries, or six, and no injuries were nine. Station one or ladder 31 continues to be the busiest station. Some of the highlights, we did have the fire chief met with all shifts and all stations over the past month. Had good conversations with them, some good takeaways. So hopefully we'll work on that, some communication issues with them. So we're working on that. We offered instructor one and two classes this month. All of our personnel did participate in our annual SEBA or Airepac training at the houses that we plan to burn sometime in the future when the weather cooperates and instructors are able to get there as well. As far as community events, I know we attended, I think Adventure Church has a summer camp. I think we were there for a couple of sessions of that. So I'm in a birthday party here or there in the neighborhood. Out in the community, communicating and showing them what we have and what we do. Any questions?
I have a question I've never answered before, Chief Dunn. EMS and fire trucks, when the dispatch goes out, and I know fire trucks don't necessarily always go now to certain things, but the other day on the road closure on Stallings, an EMS vehicle came down and stopped. They were like, oh, I can't get through here with their lights going and everything. And my neighbor texts me and says, well, evidently they can't read either. So I was just wondering if there was any communication about road closures between EMS and...
We, Harrisburg Fire informed Cabarrus County, along with Concord Dispatch informed Cabarrus County Dispatch. So there's three dispatch centers, as you're aware, at Cabarrus County, Concord, and Canapples. So they all communicate with one another. The difference is, and some of the things we talked about a couple of years ago, while we, some of the justifications we want to change our services is, and this is one in particular, Concord is very meticulous about keeping their maps up to date. So literally, they can go in there and draw a little line, and that's what they've done. So all of our trucks are dispatched off AVL or the closest unit. So because that little line's there, we know, and our people know just because of human knowledge. But from a dispatch perspective, the dispatchers and the computer knows whatever particular address that little line is at, either Station 3 is gonna go, or Station 2, or 1, or whatever, whoever particular is closer. Again, I can't speak for the county. I just assume maybe they don't have that technology yet.
Yeah, it was just, you know, they were blaring their sire ring, and the lights were going, and then it's like, whoop.
Like some of our folks, they probably didn't read the email.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate you.
Speak for a moment about the expansion to Flow Store.
So beginning, it actually began at 5:00 PM on June 30th. We did that because of the holiday weekend. What we talked about earlier about GIS folks being available, IT folks being available, make sure we didn't have any headaches. So again, all of those dispatch centers communicated very well. All of that information was loaded. So again, all of those dispatch centers communicated very well. All of that information was loaded. So so far it's been a, it's been a seamless event. We've, I think we've responded into that new area about four times so far. I think we've, you know, we ran the numbers when we initially looked at the cost benefit. And we think there was about a hundred incidents in that particular area over an annual basis. So that's probably about right from what we're seeing, seeing today. But so far, all calls or incidents are being handled just like they normally would so, so far since.
So is Flow Store, will that be closed or is that?
So they're, they're still operating. They just basically, the county did a study about two years ago and out of that study, and even from previous studies, they were challenged to look at fire station locations and again, go off who's closer to a particular area to be able to respond. So in that time period, we've built station three and Midland's built station two. So if you look at the overall global map, you, you see that between those two stations, basically the southwest portion of Flow Stores District, which actually went all the way down to twenty-four, twenty-seven, took a right all the way to the Mecklenburg County line, and you had Midland right there. So it really didn't make a whole lot of sense. So there were some pushback, of course, from, from Flow Store and I, and I get it. But ultimately, we're here for, for the community and the citizen. And so we're definitely going off the concept of what stations were, were closer. And so far, so good, but they're still there. We need them. I, I made that very clear to the county commissioners that, you know, we, we utilize them on a mutual aid basis when we get busy. And that happens quite a bit. We don't, right at this current moment, not say we won't in the future, we don't purchase tankers because Flow Store has tankers. So there's no, no, to me, there's no sense in us repeating what's already available right there. So, so they're definitely still an asset and I want to make the county, you know, aware of that, that because their finances were cut, so they've got some challenges ahead. And I'm not sure what the details of that are, but I know they got a little bit of tax increase to try to, you know, bridge some of that gap, but so we definitely need them.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions for Chief Dunn? Thank you. And now Captain Meesmer.
Congratulations. Thank you. I'm sorry I wasn't here when you made the announcement. We had a citizen come in with the domestic issue we were in the back dealing with. So let's get into June. Pretty busy, pretty busy this whole time. There's a lot of things in July we got to talk about too, but we're going to hit the June numbers. In June, the law enforcement related activities was four thousand seventy-seven. We conducted three thousand two hundred and ninety-three security checks, four hundred and ninety-three traffic stops with an average non-emergency, no blue light and siren response time of six minutes and thirteen seconds, which, as I always say, that is blazing. For us to get to you in six minutes with any type of traffic, that is great. So breaking down to some of the more important things that people want to hear about, starting with, I did get my promotion. My, my replacement hopefully will be named in the next week or two. The assessment was today. So normally within a week, give or take, we will have who's going to replace me. We had three great candidates. So we'll be in good shape no matter who gets the job. Next, we are at full staff. All the cars are filled. Another thing I'm happy to say is, last time I was up here, I mentioned our traffic unit may be delayed until April-ish of next year because we cannot get cars. I went to the sheriff, spoke with him and the other admin. The county is in good enough shape, they are going to loan us cars. So in January, we will be able to go ahead and start that traffic unit as soon as the funds are available. We feel comfortable, we can fill that with loaner cars until our cars come in. I did not get a chance to talk to Brian Lee. Our parking lot was finished today. They literally put the cones up right before I came in. So all that's left now is the sidewalk, a little bit of landscaping and an opening ceremony. Next, one of the things that we had happen this in June was a large identity theft arrest. We had a female who was caught, she had nine different warrants for identity theft. She also was committing the crime as our deputy called her in a chase. At that point, he was also able to find four other victims that were unaware that they ever have an identity theft from other counties. So now she's enjoying the cuisine up at the Cabarrus County Jail for quite a while. Larceny from business still seems to be our biggest problem here in Harrisburg. The, I believe I received some calls from one or two of you folks this past week with one that was over a thousand dollars. Those folks are in our jail now. We were able to catch them shortly afterwards. I hate to say it, it's like a Hydra. You catch two, two more come back in this place or four more. But at least we're staying ahead of it and making arrests. Usually within a week or two, we're able to put those folks in jail and hopefully keep them coming back for round two. And last but not least, the Fourth of July, big event. We had close to forty deputies in the, in or at the parade and in or at the park each night. I think it was a great success on a safety standpoint. We had absolutely no alcohol issues, no fights, no verbal fights. We had nothing. And you could look within a hundred feet of you, a hundred yards at least, and see a deputy staring back at you. We had that park full. And as Lee, who rode with me for two days, can now attest, there isn't a nook or cranny. We don't go inside that park. We, we went off-road more than once. We also put deputies this year for the first time in the surrounding subdivisions just to make sure they weren't being impacted by the sheer amount of people coming in. They don't deserve that and we had zero issues with that. Everything went well. We did not have any complaints about any businesses that were having driveways blocked, et cetera. We'd have been ready to tow those vehicles. It was a good event. We ended up with eleven missing kids total. That was the only thing we had. And I'm not going to really say missing kids. Let's say two missing kids and nine missing parents. The night of the third was a missing child. She got separated from her parent and made it to the ticket booth, found the deputy, we found the parents. The next night of the fourth, we had a three-year-old that got away, made it from the playground all the way down to near the stage where luckily Jim and some other folks were able to intercept that child. The other nine, I'm not going to say every one, but the sheer majority were parents taking their child up to the playground. With that many people, it's not advisable and saying, stay at the playground, Jimmy, we're going to go get a corn dog. And at that point, the kid would eventually get scared. They hadn't seen their parents in thirty minutes and would come up to the deputy who we had stationed there and our deputy would end up locating the parents. We've got a few ideas on how to make that better next year because that is a lot of missing kids. We were just lucky. We had good staff there that could keep the kids calm, happy and find the parents. But we do have some good ideas for that. Any questions for me?
I do have one question back to the larceny. That was, was that the high-speed chase?
That was. It went inside of Charlotte.
So you did get.
Yes, they were able to catch those individuals within two to three days, I believe, if I'm not mistaken.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
And they were going in and out of traffic head-on and they.
I don't want to say that. I've never actually asked the other, as soon as they passed our deputies on the road and they laid locked eyes, they gunned it. And as soon, and our deputies hadn't even turned on the blue lights, hadn't tried to turn around on them yet, and they punched it at five o'clock. Now luckily for us, at five o'clock on that day, traffic had not gotten bad yet. They turned around, tried to give them a pull over. They went into Charlotte where I called it off as they got near four-eighty-five because five o'clock traffic, if it's not busy, then it will be within five or 10 minutes. And we did not know at the time if it was going to be a felony or misdemeanor, but it's still stolen property. And I didn't feel comfortable with that amount of people on the road pushing our luck with that. So we went the investigative route to catch.
Do decoy cars work at all if you had one at the line?
In my experience, we have stuck decoy cars out before and they might work for a night, maybe two. But most of the time, people realize that car hasn't moved. And even when, I believe it was two years ago, CBS is right before COVID, we're getting hit left and right. We were parking the car there. We were having to go every couple of hours and move the car just to keep it fresh to make people think someone was there. That does get a little time consuming, but it is an option if we have to.
So what about Councilman Smith notified us this week about July fourth with La Unica and Rocky River Coffee House? Can you elaborate anything on that?
Still, whatever, being these of those businesses, someone busted the window, went inside, stole alcohol and a safe, if I'm not mistaken. Still working on that.
So we don't know if it's due to the extended, somebody came to Fourth of July, stayed over.
And that's not the first time those businesses have been hit. And it was the exact same MO last time, going in, hitting the alcohol, which is pretty expensive, as you well know. And that's what they went in for and the safe wasn't bolted down, so they grabbed it. That's not the first time that's happened at those businesses.
And what time of the night did that happen? Do you recall the time?
Yep. We're still working on that one.
And Lieutenant Meesmer, Sheriff Shaw mentioned to me, and I'll just say thank you. He said that you were able to get a donation for the furniture at the police annex through AAA and certainly appreciate that.
We were able, of course, we'll have an open house here soon, or at least abbreviated open house. AAA of the Carolinas closed down one of their office buildings after they'd only opened it for a couple of months. COVID hit. And I just happen to have a resource that worked there and they donated pretty much all our furniture. We bought very, very few things inside that building, which allowed us to do a few upgrades since it's going to be a while, while we're in that building for a while.
Any other questions for Captain Meesmer?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just kind of reiterate a couple of comments. Just thank everyone for the July third and fourth. That was kind of my first time being a huge part of that and I was very impressed. I actually had lots of good feedback too for the parking at the high school and middle school and taking the shuttle over. Had a couple of emails, said that was seamless. They weren't sure what to expect, but that was a good option for them. And then just looking forward to seeing everyone at the next Rock in the Bar concert because that is coming up on August thirteenth. So with that, I'll move into any council comments this evening.
Mayor, I have one, the, there was a organization in Harrisburg and the surrounding area called Carolina Christmas Angels. And it is run by Kelly Troutman. And she has invited council and the mayor on December the tenth is when they'll have their, where they give gifts out to the less fortunate kids and it's from four to six-thirty. So she wanted me to mention it to you. The sheriff's department is involved, the fire department's involved. It's kind of like angel trees. You can go, I'll send out an email to you, the link to the, to her website. She just wanted it to be a community event, art soul funeral home, all four locations accept donations for, for toys and everything. So she just wants council, the mayor to come and be, to show the community that we are supportive of this and it's for those less fortunate kids. And here again, I'll be sending that information out in an email to you.
Thank you, Ryan.
I'll jump in for a moment. I'll just say that with Stallings Road being closed, I think most folks on Stallings have realized the traffic is not, the traffic is not Stallings, but rather folks coming from Rocky River, either possibly the mills or that area, shooting down that road. Because now with it closed, you can actually get out and run on the road. You could put a bike on the road. There, there's little traffic whatsoever. So it's, it's been nice. We'll be interested to see how that picks back up once the roundabouts open up and get built. The other issue was I received a phone call today from William Moore. He lives in Flowers Farm and he just wanted to send his appreciation to you, Mallory, and to the town for finally moving forward to get these sidewalks moving from Flowers Farm down. He's been pushing for twenty-two years and was just ecstatic today to hear that step one is in the books and we're moving forward. So thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. At this point, we do not have any public hearings on the agenda tonight, so we'll move into our old business. The first item up is the consideration of annexation or rezoning a portion of parcel off of Stallings Road for a single-family home. And Zach Gordon will be presenting this evening.
Good evening, Mayor Council. It's good to be before you for the first time. I think I've met just about everybody, but if not, we can, we can chat afterwards. Thanks, James. So there's two items which you heard at the, the last council meeting and I'll go through those fairly quickly. First is a annexation consideration of rezoning a parcel on Stallings Road for, yes, advanced, okay. It's a four-point-two-five acre parcel, which is partially in our ETJ and partially in the county. So it's split. And so the portion that's in the ETJ is zone RE, portion in the county is LDR. Both of those will be RE and then the plan is to annex into the, into the town limits. So here's a, an image that shows you the location of, of the property and it straddles that line in, in the middle where that blue pin is. And so there'll be, it's just across from Flowers Farm and it will be a, just a single parcel. And there's the outline and you can see it's roughly divided between county and then ETJ. Here's a survey that, that shows a little bit more in the ETJ than county. In terms of the land use recommendations, we reviewed this last meeting. Future land use map calls for medium density, primarily single-family attached with some townhome and duplexes, two to three units per acre. And really this is an area that is intended to be, and there's a location with the star. This is intention, tended to be a transitional area per the UDO from the lower to the higher density residential. And the RE calls for one unit per acre for conventional and up to two for conservation. And so the proposed RE designation is actually lower in terms of the, what could be done in the, in the RE. And so in, in that sense, it is consistent with the Harrisburg Land Use Plan. Associated with that rezoning will be an annexation or is a request for annexation for the four-point-two-five acres to bring that completely into the town limits half is in the ETJ now half is in the, in the county. There was no neighborhood meeting required for this request for rezoning or annexation. Again, the proposed zoning exceeds the halip for residential medium density. In this case, the halip would actually allow for up to point eight units per acre and this is point two-four units per acre. So it is a, well under what could be done. Planning and zoning board recommended approval at their May seventeen meeting. And there was a public hearing on June thirteenth before the council. Council must adopt a consistency statement, either approving or denying the request. And planning and zoning is recommending approval of the rezoning and the annexation. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you, Zach. Are there any questions from council? Is there a motion on the floor to approve the annexation, rezoning of an apartment for the property of Stallings Road? Thank you. Ian, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rick. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion has carried. Rich, we will turn to you for a consistency statement. Rich, I think you might be on mute. I see it. Rich, we see, we, we saw you pop back up. If you could just take your microphone off of mute.
Sorry, Mayor, my, my computer ran out of juice. Plug it into something else. Do you need me?
Yes, we need a consistency statement for the annexation or rezoning of the Stallings Road for a single-family home.
Okay. Well, that would be based on the staff report and the staff presentation and the application submitted by the applicant. The, the proposed rezoning is consistent with the provision of the Harrisburg Area Land Use Plan and is reasonable and in the public interest.
Thank you, Rich, is there a motion to approve the consistency statement? Thank you, Ian. Is there a second? Thank you, Ron. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion has carried. Next, we have the consideration of annexation or rezoning of a parcel at ninety-six twenty-five Reedy Lane associated with the request for the town services. And again, Zach will be presenting that again.
So very similar to the, the first request. Forward on to five B. So this is a rezoning and annexation request for 9625 Reedy Lane. It is for one parcel measuring 15 acres. So does the entire parcel. Purpose of rezoning is to access town services. And the property to be rezoned is currently entirely in the county and will require annexation completely into the town limits. This is a rezoning from countryside residential county zoning to RE rural estate town zoning. And here's the image and, and you can see the location of the property. This is a, a non-contiguous, meaning if I just go back one slide, you can see the darker shade slide below. There's one property in between this and the other. That's a town limit. And because it is not adjacent, it's considered non-contiguous. And for the purposes of annexation, it just requires a little bit different notification. But essentially, we're going to get to the same place. Land Use Plan recommends low density residential, one to two dwelling units per acre, single family homes with conservation design provision for more open space in exchange for smaller lots. And so you can see the location of the property on the, on the map right there. In terms of the UDO, again, the RE zoning district is intended to provide a transition between low and medium to high density residential uses. And it is for one dwelling unit per acre, less than one dwelling unit per acre for conventional and up to two for conservation subdivision. This particular proposal or this request is actually about point six seven. So it falls under the point eight units that RE would allow for. So it is consistent with the Harrisburg Area Land Use Plan. And again, annexation for this property is requested 15 acre parcel. And it would be again entirely in the town limits. There was no neighborhood meeting required. It is consistent with the halip, planning and zoning to recommend approval at their May 17 meeting. And there was a public hearing at the council's June 13 meeting. And again, if the decision is to approve, then a consistency statement would need to be adopted. Planning and zoning is recommending approval of the rezoning request and the associated annexation of approximately 15 acres. And if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you, Zach, are there any questions? Is there a motion on the floor, motion on the floor to approve the annexation, rezoning a map a minute for the 9625 Reedy Creek, Reedy Lane parcel?
So move.
Thank you, Rick, is there a second? All team, thank you, all in favor? Any opposed? The motion has carried. Rich will move to you for a consistency statement for this rezoning as well. Rich, I think you're still on mute. Rich, can you hear us?
Oh, there we go. I'm sorry. My mouse wasn't working. I have all kinds of technical difficulties, sorry about that.
No problem.
So here we go with the consistence, consistency statement. Based on the, the presentation by staff and the staff report and of course, the, the application that was submitted to the town. This rezoning is consistent with the provisions of the Harrisburg Area Land Use Plan and is reasonable in the, in the, in the public interest.
Thank you, Rich, is there a motion to approve the consistency statement as stated?
So move.
Thank you, Ron, is there a second? Thank you, all team, all in favor? Any opposed? The motion has carried. Thank you, Zach.
Two and O's, Zach, not bad.
Next, we have the consideration of contracts for fire training grounds and Chief Dunn will be presenting again this evening. Two showings today.
So, good evening again, Mayor and Council. So we're here before you tonight. You have two particular contracts, one for storage containers and then one for an actual, what we'll call a tower. So we've put together a short presentation to hopefully give you more information on what, a little bit of history and what we're trying to do. And hopefully we'll go from there. So today we have, our training division is head by Chief Jimmy Green who's with us. And he'll go over the PowerPoint. Then we'll be happy to answer any questions. Chief Brady's here as well and myself, so.
Evening, everybody. So again, my name's Jimmy Green. I'm the chief of training. I guess I've held the role for, I don't know, four or five years now. I've been a member of the fire department almost as long as I've been alive. I was a volunteer, watched everything happen as we've gone from a, where we were all volunteer all the way up to paid now. And it's been awesome to watch this process go along. What we're talking about here is training our folks. So at the currently, a little history on how this came to be. So December 28th, 2005, we, the fire department, which was then just the volunteer department, purchased the land for what currently is Station Two. And that land was purchased with the intent of knowing that we wanted to have a training grounds for our own people at some point. Eight point two acres, I'm saying, I think everybody knows about it now. When we went under the town to be municipal, all that was needed to the town. And then we built a new station in 2019. And then we decided that we were going to put a water tower up on current land, which, I mean, it made sense. We already had the land inside the town, but that took away from some of what we were trying to do with our training grounds. So we had to get a little bit more creative, which was fine. The water tower is finally completed and operational. And so we started doing some redesigned work on what we wanted to do. And you can see in that bottom picture, that's kind of where we're at, at the moment. That the water tower is already complete. That's us pouring some footings for what we wanted to do ahead. So a little bit about why we want to do this, and I think, did everybody get to see this already? So I don't go bullet by bullet, it's up to you guys. I can definitely go bullet by bullet. Currently, we don't have a training facility for Harrisburg. So some of you have been out and seen us training out in the streets. We rely heavily on donated structures. They come and go, seems like sometimes it's feast or famine with those. We might get three or four at a time and then we might not get any for a year, two years sometimes. So we have to get pretty, you know, ingenuative with how we end up doing our trainings. To get all of our, our closest burn building, so that's what we're talking about building, is Roland Conference Community College, the main campus up in Salisbury. So that's 26 miles away from Station One. One way. So you can imagine, that's kind of hard for us to pick up the whole fire department, go train there for the day and not have the fire department here for our own citizens. The distance to that makes it very hard. We do it once a year. We, we end up having people out of service while we do that. We usually send one company at a time up there to, to get some facility hours is what it's called. We have to have 18 hours a year per person, so 45 members times 18. You can see that a fire truck's driving up and down the road to Salisbury a lot. And they're not in service to be here for our people. Right? So what we have gone out and done is we looked at a couple of different options. I've been pretty lucky to go across the nation and see a lot of different burn buildings. And the brick and mortar are always the most expensive. So when you think about like something at the Charlotte Fire Department Training Academy or RCCC, if you've ever been there and seen it, it's all brick, concrete, metal. When they built the burn building that we use at that point, that was in 2014, that was $850,000. They just built a six-story tower that they just opened up last year. It was 1.4. What fire departments across the nation have started doing is using shipping containers, hooking them all together. Whether you bring a company in to do the work or if you've got the skill set inside the fire department, taking that skill set and making those containers work for you. At the end of their life, if you, you know, damage them too much, you're out. Want to ship the container, you can literally take them apart, crane one out, put a new one back in to replace that. So that helps with our issue with how do we train our folks here locally? Some of the other trainings that we do, there's a picture of kind of what we're talking about. So those are shipping containers that have been painted and, you know, windows and doors welded onto them and, you know, interior hallways and all that good stuff. So what we're, what we can do is we've designed a building that's about 3,800 square feet. And the intent was to try to mimic almost everything that we could have here in the town of Harrisburg. There's some other ones that are one and two cans and you're talking, you know, three or 400 square feet worth of building. We wanted to build one big enough to where we can put our folks on the scene of whatever emergency it is inside that building and kind of mimic a house here in town. All right, so we have homes smaller than that, we have homes much bigger than that. So we tried to come up with a good number there. Some of the other things that we're trying to do is we do a lot of rope work, technical rescue stuff where you, you know, maybe it's construction worker, work hard, hard on a roof or stuff like that. That's where we come in with the tower itself. So this is actually a picture, a screenshot of a tower that we have designed with a company named Affordable Drill Towers conveniently. This is basically scaffolding that's rated. We can anchor ropes to almost any portion of this. We can redesign it in many different forms or fashions. And that gives us all of our points that we can use for ISO, which is insurance company. I'm sure you've heard Chief Dunn talk about getting lowering the insurance rates. So this connected to our burn building would give us everything that we need. You know, we can, we'll be able to, you know, basically do anything we want to do from a rope rescue standpoint on this. That's kind of the proposed when it's all hooked together. You know, allow, allows us to do just about anything that we want to do. Something that is also of benefit, not just to the members that we currently have, but currently we also don't have a good place inside the county for when we have our recruit classes with us in Concord. We go up to RCCC a lot. We lose about two hours of instruction a day doing that because we have to drive them up there, then we have to drive them back. So not just for our folks that are on shift, but for our new hires. This will provide something that, you know, we'll be able to, you know, maximize more, you know, time in the seat, if you will, you know, of actually getting some instruction to them. Hopefully maybe even shorten up classes a little bit if we could. Another benefit to this is some of you, I think, saw we did a joint training session with the sheriff's office. I've gotten a little bit more involved with the SWAT team because of that. And they are super excited about us if we get to do this because they want to use it too. So all, you know, and that's all the way down to the, you know, the deputies are in the street every day, not just the SWAT team guys. So, you know, lots of advantages to it. As I said, benefits, you know, I've pretty much hit on most of them already. Probably the biggest one, besides the fact that, you know, it's going to give our people a lot more training is the in-district hour. So right now we're about 800 hours. We figure at, at least that our folks are not in town. They're, they're going to RCCC to go train. So, you know, obviously that would be a little bit better benefit to have our folks here all the time. So again, that's the kind of a little bit bigger picture for everybody. And then if you have any questions?
And this might go to you, Brian, because some of us are new. So I understand that this is the capital projects ordinance.
Yeah, this is the, this is the last one remaining 2017 Station Two capital project. That's carried through all the way until now. So these ones are budgeted and already funded. But this is just approving the contracts. We've already done a lot of the groundwork, concrete grading like that, but these contracts are.
This gets pushed back, you said 2017? Will that require amendment for us to move money?
It's all sitting there and the project is waiting. Last month, we accepted all of our capital projects right here.
And this came in under, correct?
Hundred and one.
And Chief and Brian, if you guys, correct me if I'm wrong, but these are the last two contracts associated with that capital project, right? Because there was some, you know, miscommunication or I guess misunderstanding because we did have a, a fire training facility in the CIP during the budget workshop. And then you see fire training facility come up here, but there are two different. This was the already approved physical fire training facility. The almost $700,000 that was requested and didn't make it into this budget was for the classrooms, new buildings that would go up front. That is still something council would have to consider later in, in next year's budget. This one is the, again, I think it's the final completion of the multimillion dollar, multi-year Station Two build out.
So no duplication whatsoever between that and the proposed 700,000 that'll come back up?
That's my understanding. If I'm wrong, please correct me.
So in the future, of course, you'll want to do additional things within the site as we get down there, get familiar with it. Sooner or later, you will want to put either a brick and mortar building or you'll want to put some type of classroom like what the sheriff's office just did. That's much more economical. So sometime in the future, we'll be, you know, back trying to build on what's down there, make a complete campus.
So Brian, the $100,000 that is under budget, it's still part of the ordinance. At what point is it going to go back to the general fund? Are you going to say you have $100,000 and now you're going to go spend it on something? Or tell me what's going to do.
Officially expires February this year after this fiscal year. But, but we have to bring all contracts to you under that.
So the 100,000 should go back into the budget now?
And if this is not built, where will the money be allocated to?
This is not built and the entire remainder of the project will expire this year.
At the end of this year?
Or if you, if you said right now, we cannot afford to the major of this and we're currently canceled. Or it's expired on February 30th.
Total amount of money that was allocated is right around 200,000?
Two eighty-five.
Twenty-five.
I have a question about the shipping container, folks. Believe it or not, I've actually done some work with shipping containers. They're sort of odd. Or did you vet them? Because they sound like they're kind of new and they're like doing this thing. Have you been to see some of their work particularly? How many projects have they done? They're, they're, they're solid and they're stable things until you start putting holes in them. And so is someone, is there an engineer that's putting this together for you? Because from the estimate, it just likes your buying shipping.
So we are buying the shipping containers separately, then we're doing the work. I've been pretty lucky that I've been able to go to a lot of different burn buildings. Actually, I'm an adjunct instructor for a company called Fire Department Training Network in Indianapolis. So they've actually got one that's about 50, we call them cans, but shipping containers worth. It's, I don't know, eight story, eight, it's seven stories tall. And they're not having any problems with them. It's the, the route Charlotte Fire Department just put about 15 of them together. Midland actually just has three of them together, you know, locally. So if we wanted to go take a look at them, we could. There, it's, we can mimic fire behavior very well in these as opposed to inside a concrete steel burn building. Just because of the confines of how we do all that work. Several of us already know how to weld, so we'll do most of the work that way. We can engineer it. The tower itself has been engineered, the concrete. We can engineer it, the tower itself has been engineered, the concrete pad has been engineered, the cans themselves, like I said, the pad has been engineered for the cans. One thing that we will do extra that some companies don't do, some fire departments don't do, is we'll actually put the modular locks that, like, when they send containers over on a ship, they actually lock all those outsides together. That doesn't say that they, they still have failures because they're floating all over the ocean, but, but, uh, we will do a little bit better job, I think, than they will on that. So the, the short answer is yes, uh, we have kind of vetted it. We haven't engineered the building itself, but that's something that we can do.
Okay, and you can do that in-house. And so all the funds to paint it, weld it, cut it, buy paints, are that all just the operational funds?
It would come out of the training.
You're just buying containers here.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and presumably the county or somebody from the building department makes you engineer this stuff and approve it.
Well, it's not considered a permanent structure because it's not, it, it's just sitting on the ground. So they actually said that that's a loophole that some fire departments go.
Okay, I, I mean, just speaking from, you know, because this is what I do for a living, you might want to look at that because it could be dangerous to your folks. Because like I said, they're really good structures until you put a bunch of holes in them.
Right.
And if you just like go out there and go, oh, well, this three and a half by three and a half angle looks good enough, you know what I mean? But, you know, you stack them three high and.
Actually is less than one percent grade.
No, I'm not, I'm talking about the boxes themselves, I mean, they get, they get weak when you poke holes in them. You know, so something to think about, because I, I did some work with some shipping containers on a project, and it was substantial amount of steel that had to be added back when you put holes in them.
Yeah.
So something to think about, because I, I wouldn't want one of your folks to get hurt out.
Absolutely.
Along his same line, what does that do for our liability if we're doing it in-house? As opposed to having certified engineers? I mean, or we had a greater, if someone was to get hurt, or we had a greater risk in that regard because we did it in-house? Or, I mean, I get we're saving money, but are we hurting ourselves by saving money?
We're more than happy to have them look at it, approve what we're trying to do. Inside or outside, have that expertise either way.
I'd pass it to the council people in the, at least one council person. Now, from a structural standpoint, I mean, uh, you know, I'm sure there is a structural professional engineer that, that does these. I'm not aware of, of folks that do that, I mean, this is mostly going to be in the architect realm. So, you know, I'm not sure how, I've not designed one. I've heard that, you know, you've done something with shipping containers, fire departments are doing this like crazy. I would assume there was, you know, some, whoever's putting these together is going to take some liability for, for that.
So this is, uh, what NFPA, National Fire Protection Agency, this is NFPA fourteen oh three certified. They would come in and, or we would submit the plans that we have and they would see that. When we got re-inspected for insurance, the ISO audit, Jeremy, who was in, uh, who did the inspection, I showed him what we were talking about. And from a state standpoint, he already said that was, if this is what you're doing. If they would come back, of course, once it was completed, but he said then that that would, would meet the goals for, for the state. To, to maybe rest some fears, I can tell you that Charlotte's doing all their own stuff with guys in-house. They're doing all their own welding and, and that stuff, so I, they're not too terribly worried about it. So, and the chief of training over there is a stickler for all that stuff too, trust me, I know him personally.
My, my concern is, I mean, it, just, just because they're all doing it, i- it's fine, but the concern that I have is they're all doing it and no one's gotten hurt yet. And if we go down that path and someone, we happen to be the first one to have someone get hurt. I don't want us to be the test case, right? I want us to make sure that we are within boundary and that our liability is no less today than it was had we had another company come in to do it.
Mayor, can I, can I have a comment for a minute?
Yes.
Jimmy, if I was you, I'd just get an engineering company, use the money and do it with an engineering company, if that sounds like what everybody wants to do. That way, there's no liability to us, you're just going to spend the rest of the money.
Well, my, my take on this is, it sounds like RCCC just built a really nice, sounds like state of their facility, completed two thousand twenty-one, one point four million. And I understand it's time away from, you know, the county, but it seems that you're getting the use of much better facility. And with this, it's kind of a, seems like a makeshift solution when we already have a much better solution, much better structure. It's just a time away from the county, but eighteen hours per employee per year, that's, doesn't seem too strenuous.
That's a, well, we do and don't, we, we can't daily go there, where this we can use daily. For, for, we're not setting fires in it every day, we're not doing complex rope rescue scenarios every day. We would be doing, you know, stretching a hose line, uh, fake theatrical smoke um, in a building that we're not worried about scuffing up. We can do some of this stuff in the firehouse, but the building and grounds budget is going to take a hit when we start dragging air packs and hoes and stuff through the fire stations, if that makes sense. So.
Right now, you go for all of that training, you go down.
Every bit of it, yes, ma'am. And we've got, we're, we're an incredibly young fire department, we've got a lot of new members that we brought on in the last few years. Um, and it's a good thing that we don't have a lot of serious fires, but it's also, you know, how many times do we want to take that chance of them not being exposed to anything besides a couple of training fires a year? So that's how I feel about it from my shop, from the chief of training, if that makes sense.
Is there anything you'll have to go out to RCC to do?
Is there, if, if we build this, no.
You'll just be done.
We'll be done, yeah, so we will be in, in, and that's the other, you know, one of the bullet points is, our folks are here. Yes, they may be tied up in a simulation at the moment, but if it ends up being in a bigger call, they can break away from that and respond immediately where, when they're twenty-six miles away, takes a little bit of time to get back. And that also ties up our mutual aid partners. So, you know, the, the ball keeps rolling down the hill a little bit. If we have one or two fire trucks out of service, we usually ask for one to come back fill one of our stations. So we're already short one fire truck. Now, that other fire department short another fire truck to come help us already, so.
Are you going to charge the SWAT team?
We haven't talked about that, uh, as long as they don't destroy anything, but, uh, there is a small chance we could recoup some funds. And when I say it's not going to pay the building off by any means, but if another fire department wants to come, use our facility, we can use that for mutual aid training wise, it helps with our ISO score for there too. And we can say, hey, look, you use the disposables that we have, you know, so what we set on fire here is strong palette. So you have to pay for that, like, you're not going to come use the Harrisburg Fire Department's resources for that, you can come use the building. But, you know, so there are some, you know, I'm not going to say revenue streams, because it's not near enough to, to justify that. But, you know, there are some benefits to that, and just us working hand in hand with folks we don't get to work with that much.
Yeah, I mean, you're going to have to maintain it too.
So, and that was kind of more, my thought process was if we do charge something like that, that, that goes to, you know, look, we need to sand it down and repaint it again because it looks bad, or, you know, we tore up a forceful entry door. For whatever reason, we can fix some of that stuff in-house.
I, uh, I was on the council twenty seventeen and I approved that vote or that, this to go through and I'll stay with it. My only concern is, what you've heard tonight is that I want us to know that we are not any greater and a greater liability than we are by having someone else either engineer it or inspect it or power that. I don't, I don't do this, I don't know.
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure our liabilities has not changed.
So are there any inspection required?
Well, so it's all about the area jurisdiction, which is the town of Harrisburg. So we can certainly reach out to their building, but, you know, Chief Frank's already done that. Yeah, if the council's comfortable with us doing some engineering on the box side, that's fine, the tower side is engineered, that's engineered by the company. We're good on that side, but, you know, one last question, what I like about this, it's a control of fire. Really, a lot of times we're training now, or not at Harrison City or some other facility, and they're just in the backyard, they're just climbing on a building. Me, I have more concern with that and having the reds.
One other point to consider on this is that there, because this is a twenty seventeen project, there's quite a bit of sunk cost on it. So council's previously, uh, approved several contracts along the way, so there was a grading contract, I'm not sure, it was like forty thousand dollars. The footing and foundations were approved, I think it was like ninety thousand dollars. So everything except for these two structures have been approved up until this point. Um, I do, uh, you know, after listening to the conversation, I, I kind of thought this was a package as far as the, the approvals on the tower and the, and the containers. Um, I'd be more comfortable having, you know, architect or engineering approval on the container. Sure of that, I think, uh, just, you know, consideration of sunk costs and getting us to this point. And like Councilman Smith said, it's kind of been supported to this point, but I also wouldn't want to create any additional liability. Uh, so that's something that, we'd reach out to folks that have done this and say, okay, what, what are the normal course of things? Is it a building permit? Is it a set of, uh, structural engineered, uh, drawings? Is it, you know, architectural approvals, like what, what do we, what do we need to get into to make sure that this is a legitimate facility? That, that tags on to our current liability without some rider that we don't know about.
You said something, and I'm not taking away from anybody's talent or anybody's. You, you said we all know how to weld, and I get that. But those that weld professionally have some company's liability behind them. And it's even if something broke of that weld, it caused somebody their life or, or limb damage or whatever. There's a way for them to, to go back and recourse to that company. And while it's all well-intended, that's where I'm at, I just want to make sure that.
Absolutely.
Do what is.
I, one hundred percent agree.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm fine with the contracts, it seems like it's going to work for you guys, just, it scares me. Because as, as you know, some people may not, building codes are written after a disaster.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, and.
As our fire.
I understand, yeah, I understand that, you know, the building department thinks that it's a temporary, or it's classified as a temporary structure. But one of these is going to go down, because this is like been a thing for like past ten years, maybe you start building things, things out of shipping containers. One of these things is going to go down and they're going to change it. I would personally feel more comfortable if you came back to us in a month and said, here's fifteen grand from a structural engineer that's going to engineer this thing for us, and I'd rather spend that money than spend the lawsuit money.
So can we approve, we can approve the two contracts, but then have our requests approved?
Yeah, you, you can improve, you can approve these with just the understanding that before these containers actually get built, because this is just for the purchase and, and all the constructions can be in-house, before these are brought online, that they're approved by some type of design professional to ensure that there is no additional liability taken on behalf of the town.
Okay, any other questions? Then is there a motion to approve the two attached contracts for fifty-three thousand dollars? And then the second for one hundred and thirty thousand five hundred and ten for the purchase, construction of the burn containers for tower at fire station two, with the understanding that there's going to need some additional approval to mitigate liability.
So moved.
So our second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion carried, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Next up, we have Brian. It's a consideration of the resolution by the governing body, whereby the establishment and maintenance of accounts have been authorized to facilitate investment in commercial papers.
Long title. Alright, so this is all about, uh, investing idle funds that we hold throughout the year. And one of the, uh, options that we'd like to, um, use this upcoming year as commercial paper and specifically in a laddered strategy, so we'll go over that right now. Investing idle funds is covered under General State Statute one fifty-nine thirty. And it permits the investment of any idle funds of local governments. And in short, it says that the finance officer shall have the power to purchase, sell and exchange securities on behalf of the governing board. The investment program should be so managed so that investments and deposits can be converted into cash when needed, so that's the key right there. Uh, some of the investments that we're allowed to invest in are obligations of the United States, obligations of the Federal Financing Bank, credit banks, Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, obligations of the state of North Carolina, bonds and notes of any North Carolina local government, savings certificates and prime quality commercial paper. And that commercial paper has to have the highest rating of at least one nationally recognized rating service and also not have any rating other than the highest by another, uh, nationally recognized rating service. And then there's very, various other investment vehicles that we have, uh, the authority to use. But the one we're focusing on now is the prime quality commercial paper. So some of the historical investments that we've made as a town is, um, participating in the North Carolina Capital Management Trust. That is a fully liquid, uh, trust that a lot of municipalities in the state use, and it's what we've used for the majority of our funds. Uh, the rate fluctuates with the market, it's usually a little bit higher than the Fed funds rate, so it's, it's pretty well tied to that, uh, which means it's pretty low overall, but it is completely liquid and it has no risks to it. Um, we have checking and savings accounts, those are very, very low interest rates but are fully liquid. And then we also have savings accounts and CDs, um, medium interest rates compared to these other accounts, but not as liquid as we have a time commitment on those. Uh, so investing in laddered commercial paper, um, we have, um, linked up with MBS, which is multi-bank securities. And, um, I provided the reference sheet, uh, for our actual investment advisor. And so he's worked with a lot of municipalities around. Uh, but what we'd like to do is begin investing in commercial paper using that laddered maturity strategy. And what that does is just even out, um, any of the market moves. So we'll, we'll purchase securities, uh, once a month as we, as we move forward, and then we'll roll those as they mature. And so what that does is just take out a lot of the fluctuations in the market. And in a rising interest rate market like we're in right now, you know, you're going to lock in at, at, is it, what is a healthy interest rate? And if the market continues to be on fire and take off and interest rates increase, you do level out a little bit compared to the market. Um, so you don't get the complete returns that you would if you were really playing the market. Um, but on the way down or in a very uncertain or volatile market, um, you've got your laddered, uh, maturities in there for three to nine months. And so you don't participate in the downturn of interest rates. Um, you do as you roll over securities, but, um, you at least get protection for that six to nine month range for all of your securities. Um, so that's the idea there, the, the laddered approach builds in and, and takes away all the risk of market movements, fluctuations. You don't have to guess about what the market's going to be doing and try to time your movements into the market. Uh, so it's, it's a really good strategy to give you solid returns without the risk and without, um, and without having your money tied up in very, very low or zero interest rate, uh, environment. So, uh, what that looks like is this is just an illustrative example here. And this is a twelve million dollar purchase here. And, um, what you do is you buy all of these, uh, securities here. So you see, you, you will recognize the names, they're very well-known and highly rated, like Toyota, Exxon, Credit Suisse. Um, so if you were to buy commercial paper today, it'd be about one point seven five percent, which is pretty close to the Fed funds rate in the one range. Um, but by, by laddering that out and not having some of those mature until April of twenty-three, um, you get a over three percent rate on those right now. So over the next nine months, we would be earning at one seven five, at two, at two forty-five on all of these that are, that are laddered in there and layered in there together. And then as each one matures, we would be able to renew at whatever the current rate is. So that's the idea of this strategy. Right now, in our capital management trust, I think we're getting one and a third. So if we were to commit to this right now, uh, we could get somewhere around two point six. And we're in an environment where that's, that's increasing, uh, every day right now. So, um, that's the idea right there. We will, um, not use any operational money, this is money that we already invest in the trust. So when you're looking through the financial statements, this is the forty percent fund balance that we're having to hold aside, the thirty percent in the water sewer fund, thirty percent in stormwater, any capital reserve funds that are unused or not planned to be used anytime soon. So all that money is what we call idle, um, that we have no need for this year, but it is, we are committing to using it in the future. So while we have that reserved or sitting in fund balance, uh, we'd like to take advantage of, uh, a much higher interest rate than we can get right now in our check. So while we have that reserved or sitting in fund balance, we'd like to take advantage of a much higher interest rate than we can get right now in our checking accounts in the trust. So I'm sure there's a couple of questions on that and that I'm glad to answer. And I've got your motion provided as well.
Mr. Lee, I have several questions. So is this considered a managed account and would we be paying them a fee to manage this?
It is a managed account, but the rate that we see on our, on our ladder schedule already has the fees taken out.
So we're getting that number. They're baked in.
They're baked in.
Okay. So if the, if the fund matures in March. Would we just do it for another four months until the next physical budget started? Or are we going to do it for a year because we really don't know what we're doing with the budget?
So we would never do more than nine months because we always want to keep it liquid within the year. So nine months is going to be our maximum on our schedule. That. There is a, there is a possibility that I would be investing this throughout the budget process and across the fiscal year as well, because it's not money that we would ever. Use in that first half of that fiscal year. We always have cash flow projects and everything covered. Through a certain time period. So if this, if we were in March and this was carrying us through to November, then. I would make sure that nothing was being tied up that we wouldn't need through November.
Okay. My other question left me. I'll have to come back in a minute.
Those are the best guy.
I know. Well, I know what one, I'm sorry. So are you, I see where the three of y'all are on it. Is there not two signatures that should be required instead of just one signature?
To actually like send the money off wire.
Or to release, you know, to cash at the end. Does it not require?
Yes, it requires two of the three of us.
Okay, okay, great. All right.
Yeah, from managing cash flows perspective, this is absolutely the right thing to do from financial services perspective. As far as the bank, who do you use for a bank to buy this?
It'll all be through MBS Inc.
No, no chance of. This money being. Distributed incorrectly. I mean, there was an incident, I guess, with the county a few years ago where money I thought was being transferred. Ended up getting transferred somewhere else and somebody got really high.
Right. Yeah, that was a long fishing game that that I think played out over a year and a half or two, and they actually switched the wire instructions on them. And so finally, when a big construction contract came through, that's what got wired through to the wrong account. So we have, we have wire instructions that we would use for this and it would really only take place initially. And then those funds are just going to roll over and roll over. But that, that's a pretty secure, you know, we're, we will be very careful with that transfer and make sure it's going to the right place. There'll be a lot of checks and balances on that.
So I am. I know nothing about this stuff and our, our, our biggest charge, I think, is to be fiscally responsible. I mean. I can tell you about shipping containers, but I know, I don't even know what you're saying. You've got to tell me what kind of risk we're talking about here.
So these are the highest rated commercial paper, which is a loan from these companies. It's usually, this is a debt that's subordinated by a lot of their other commitments. Even priority stock falls after this in a lot of cases. So it's one of the first things that one of these companies would pay if they were to go bankrupt or something like that. So it's very, very secure, very highly rated. They, you know, we can't claim that it is, that it has no risk with it, that, that we are guaranteed the principal back. But this is the second level beneath the capital management trust that has no risk. So this is our next secure level of investment. Only because of the fact that you cannot 100% guarantee that the principal will come back.
So I mean, I'm just. Like I looked at the list, like one of them was JP Morgan, right? Didn't they about go belly up in 2008? I mean, it's not unheard of.
Right. Now their government backed, but.
And we're now. Taxpayer.
Right.
Yeah, but I mean, like. But we're two quarters now of consistent. Negative growth, right? Negative GDP in the United States. Three is a recession, right? Housing looks like it's about top. I don't, I don't know. I mean.
Yeah, I think, I think the question, because I'm like you, I'm not, I'm not much more. Educated on this than, than, than you are. So I had the same question when, when we looked at it and. The way I understand it is, you know, the commercial paper is the very first in line of credit for bankruptcy. So. One, the, the primary protection is these are big companies with, with really good balance sheets that are rated. You know, triple A at Moody's or the rating agencies and. And so then let's say Exxon were to go bankrupt. Well, the first person that would get paid would be commercial paper town of Harrisburg. Second would be, you know, other collateral collateralized loans. Then, I mean, before you even get to preferred stock, which generally gets paid even in a major bankruptcy. Shareholders are last, right? So. You know, this commercial paper probably represents less than 1% of the company value and it gets paid first. So it's the, the risk isn't zero, but it's, it's as close to zero as you can get without being a T bill.
Cause I'm like, you know, I go home and talk to the wife, be like, you know, I heard about this ladder strategy. Why isn't everybody doing it?
Well, you can, you can do this. I would guess it'd be on a smaller scale, but you could, you could certainly do it.
Talk to me at.
Just for reference from the county. 516 permits for the first half of the year is by far the lowest number of housing permits. For several years.
Yeah, no, I see it about burst. But there was a thing in Austin where there's. I don't know if you've seen the graph, but there's more stuff. People are not buying houses down there right now and it's headed this way.
Yeah.
So how do we choose the companies we like? Do you bundle them? Do you package them? Do you have to manage this?
I don't manage it at all. Strangely enough, the financial advisor's name is Brian Lee as well. I promise it's not me. But with the power of two Brian Lees combined, you can do some great things.
And they are, they are a fiduciary.
Yes, and our, our actual account that holds the funds and will give us a report is Pershing LLC, which you're probably familiar with. So, you know, is it very secure environment that we would be in?
And our agreement with them, if we see red flags.
It's completely.
Major recessions, we're like, that's it. We're, we're done.
At any point we can pull the money. You'd want to let them mature out without, you know, without having to pay penalties. But the longest we have is nine months and we have no commitment whatsoever.
And who says, hey, there's a red flag? Them as a fiduciary?
It's going to be, it's going to be the two of us together.
Together.
Yeah.
How much time is it's going to take you?
It should not take much at all. I mean, he, so I've talked to a lot of the other municipalities that work with him. And it's a phone call once a month for, for 10 minutes. Here's the rates that I'm giving you and he'll send the, the latter example and it's a approval email and that's it. So very little work on staff's, on staff's half, but you know, we're looking at maybe 100, 150,000 in interest this year. This would right off the bat produce us 600 in nine months. So. Very advantageous for us.
If all things go well.
Yeah, if we were to lock in in the next month, that, that's what we'd be looking at.
Could be minus 600.
It couldn't, it couldn't be that.
It couldn't be that.
I wouldn't think.
Zero. Well, I mean, unless, so the, the.
Unless the world ends.
So if, if these, if these companies don't go bankrupt. And it would have to be all of them. Remember the other protection of the latter is you're in 10 companies. And each one of these.
Toyota trucks, but.
In each one of these.
Acid and looking so great.
Each one of these expires in a short period, right? And then it renews when they're nine months. So every month, if you have 10 of them, one is expiring. So your, your, your risk window is really every 30 days.
Right.
And then it's readjusting. If, if the things that we're talking about tonight come to fruition. You know, unfortunately, but fortunately, the town would probably benefit from those rising rate environments. If these, you know, if the economy were to slow or stall, the reason these, these rates are so low is because the economy has been jugging along so hot. But the, the downside of interest, let's say if, you know, the interest went down, it would go to zero. There's no. We don't, because these are loans, we don't, we're not participating in like a market fluctuation of the value of the company. This is a loan to Toyota and they're going to pay us. 3% and it's going to expire in nine months. And if they don't go bankrupt in nine months, we're getting our principal plus 3%. And even if they do, we're getting our principal in a bankruptcy. Closure, if they could get that done and unwound in nine months, which they're not, it's going to expire and we're going to be paid out before bankruptcy.
Just tell you like, um, all of your 401ks, all of your mutual funds, all of your index funds, they do that every day. That's, that's their strategy. They have excess funds. And they all invest in commercial paper. It's like the safest thing they can do. And there's always some sort of money floating around that they don't need, or they will do like a repo, like an overnight repo. I don't know if you guys do those. So it really is safe and all of these big banks, they do that. All the big institutional investors do that.
Right.
Because it is so safe.
Yeah, I mean, these may be dumb questions. You guys may be like, this is awesome. I'm just asking because I don't know anything about it. If it sounds too good to be true, it usually ain't.
The laddering you would used to see was laddering for the you guys like us would be, was in CDs years ago when the rates were like six and seven percent. Because you could have them just expiring every 30 days and just start rolling back into another one. But CDs went to dirt and when they went to like 1% or half percent, nobody does that anymore. But that was where you would see a lot of laddering.
Yeah, laddering is like you buy right now, let's say all of a sudden I got a ton of cash, not sure what's going to happen with interest rates. I'll buy a six month CD, a 12 month CD, a two years CD and five years CD. Just going to see what happens. Money matures and you decide if you want to invest, we invest in the same kind of shorter term or longer term. You give yourself that kind of, like Brian, you showed the average rate then for the, for the commercial.
Right.
Are any other questions?
So if we had to, I know there's no penalty, but if, if we were having to get out because we needed cash for some reason, what is that penalty? So if we were one month shy and we had to have. 500,000, 800,000, what is that penalty on that amount?
I, I don't know exactly what that would be and it probably differs by company that you're buying into. But we would never, ever let our cash, our operating cash get that low. That's just not an option. We're going to have plenty of cushion between what we're investing here, what we need for operations for the entire year. We're still going to have. Plenty there. So that, that just is not an option in my book to need this cash.
So have you set a limit on how much you would have one particular laddered investment? Is there a limit on the dollar amount?
There's not a limit on the individual, but there's a limit on our pool and we know we're going to have eight securities. So it just gets split evenly into eight securities.
Okay, so we pulled this out from last month and last month when I read the document, we were looking to invest 16 to 20 million. This month, you've knocked that down to 15 million at a max. Is there any reasoning there?
There's not a, not a mathematical one or a risk or anything like that. I just, I just wanted to narrow it. Yeah, I just wanted to narrow it down a little bit.
And this continues indefinitely unless stopped, right? This is a board resolution.
No, this is actually, this is actually authority that the finance officer has. I just want your support in branching out into a new investment vehicle. Before doing that on my own.
Oh, because I'm just reading, the resolution says it just remains in effect until.
Yeah, that is, that's true. And, and whether, you know, whether we did this or not, and I was to invest in this, it would just be open ended until it was stopped. But, but you know, we're all more comfortable with a resolution and support from the board.
I see. Okay. So you have this authority regardless.
Right.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, Brian, Brian actually has. So, so the town actually has restrictions on. What we can invest in from a risk standpoint. So that, that's Brian's really, you know, only. You know, true restriction is that he's not allowed to invest public dollars in risky assets, not even. What we all consider, you know, un risky, just, just normal stocks and bonds are not, we're not eligible for that. We can really, this is about as, as crazy as we can get as a government is commercial paper, which is the second, you know, most secure. Investment kind that we can have. Mostly we, we can only go in what the state trusts, which is, you know, almost nothing. It's a savings account and. And treasury bills and, and this, that's it.
I mean, I, I trust you, Brian, but you know, when someone comes and steals you from us, I just want to make sure the next.
It's the other Brian Lee.
Yeah.
Brian squared.
Make sure they send a picture.
Brian, can you hand the screen to the resolution?
Sure.
Oh, sure.
I guess I'm. So is there a motion to approve the attached resolutions authorized in the establishment, maintenance and investment accounts by the finance officer in accordance with general statute 159-30? So thank you. All opinions are second.
Second.
Thank you, Ronnie. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Meeting on the new business, we have consideration of the appointment to the fire advisory board. I believe Chief Dunn is coming back up again. Ignite.
Third time's the charm.
So I assume in front of you, there, there were two applications. One of the applications didn't, was not complete. So we'll push that to next month, but you have the other application in front of you that is complete. Barry Lefler. Barry's been on the board. For, I think, a couple of terms. Very asked a lot of questions, has a lot of ideas. So a very good individual to have on the board. It was advertised 30 plus days. These, these two positions are for in town. If you remember, the, the board's represented by three members in the town and two members outside of the town limits in the, in the rural area. Which then reminds me for the rural area, I guess with the slow store, we'll have to expand that a little bit. So we'll need to notify the county on that. But anyway, Barry is the eligible application that we have today. It went before the advisory board and they recommended approval or reappointment of Barry.
Are any questions for Chief Dunn on Mr. Lefler's application?
So the other one is coming back, going to be completed because all it said was I'm on the board now, right? Okay.
All right.
And I appreciate Mr. Lefler filling in in depth is, is, as I do and stuff. So I have a question. There's another one of those questions. So I'm in my third year and I've never heard when there's been something presented. To counsel. From the fire department that has gone to the fire advisory board and they approve or recommend it or suggest it. And I say that because when I read the application, the application says we turn to inform town council and give et cetera to town council, et cetera. Care to comment?
So their, their biggest. Meeting of the year is we do meet with them when we go through the budget process. They do, once we do draft one, they see that particular budget, they go through it, they ask. Questions, Barry in particular will ask a bunch of questions, others that have been on the board for a while, but. I mean, you're absolutely right. Beyond that. Be, be honest with you, unless there's some controversial issue, you would probably never hear out of. And they're, I think, I can't speak for them, but I think they're comfortable speaking through me. And they, they just feel no need to come before council for, unless it's just something that's, you know, really a hot issue or something like that.
So did they get presented the, the. Thing that we voted on earlier with the training facility and did they give ideas and say, yay, no, what?
So they did not see this particular PowerPoint because it was just created in the last seven days. But through the budget process, they were, they were informed of the operational side. And the, the capital side, which this part included. So. So they, they are aware of it from that point. Most of them, well, not most of them, several of them have, you know, been on the board for, for a while. So. I think the reference that Chief Green was trying to make to the land being purchased back in oh five is the original intent. Was to have some type of training grounds there. It just took us a while to get there, but I think he was just trying to, to base that. So. So I say that to say that the advisory board, whatever size and whoever's been on it is always. Known at some point, we're going to try to have a training facility over there.
So with the. So with the planning and zoning, we, we've, we've. Said, let's hold off a little bit until some, something can get advertised. But now that you're including flow stores and you just indicated that, should we wait another month? Let the people, or next, another two months, let the people that are currently there stay there and then let's advertise for that area to get people that are in the flow store area that might be interested.
So these are for in town. Correct, so that would exclude anybody.
Just making sure.
Yeah.
Question for you. In what way do you find this fire advisory board helpful to you?
Well, some of them have financial knowledge, some of them have engineering backgrounds. Some of them are local residents that have been here for a long time. So they either know a lot of people or have some political background or things like that. So, so kind of a mix of, of all that. It's not one particular area that they're, they're helpful in. Most of them have some particular area that Barry was, Barry was a volunteer firefighter from where he came from. He's now in the pastoral. Field, which helps us out as well, some, sometimes here and there. So, so it varies from each individual on there and that's, and that's what we try to have on there. I'm not interested in, in, you know, a bunch of yes people just saying whatever we want to do. I certainly encourage them to ask questions.
Any other questions for Chief Dunn? So I, I know originally we were, there were two, but now we're just.
Correct.
Is there a motion to appoint Barry Lefler to the fire advisory board?
Motion to appoint mayor.
Thank you. Right. Is there a second? Thank you. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion has carried. Thank you. Thank you, Chief Dunn. Next up, we have consideration of approval of the land purchase contract for the Little property for the Back Creek Greenway project. And Mallory is here with us this evening.
Saving the best for last. So this is a really good opportunity for us. I'm going to present a land purchase contract that Rich prepared and Rich online, we absolutely could not have pulled this across the finish line without him. So the property in question is right behind the public works facility. You can see on the presentation, that's the most recent Google image we have, obviously it's completed now. But this property backs up to the public works facility. We had originally come across this property in easement acquisition for the Back Creek Greenway. We only needed a small portion of it, but Mr. Little, the property owner, in preliminary talks with the property acquisition service, offered to donate it. So we've been kind of working on that over the last few months. It's 8.87 acres. It is landlocked and undeveloped, so there's no, there's no water to it. Obviously, there will be a sewer line running through it, but it's not really developable property. It's really a great property for a greenway or, you know, a small park kind of off the greenway. But it's not going to be something people drive to. The landowner agreed to sell it to us for just the cost of the 2022 taxes, which is huge, it's going to be about $460. Could have been a little cheaper, but Rob, you know, no, I'm just kidding. So our, our intended use for the property is going to be for the Back Creek Greenway. Fiscal impact of the town won't exceed $500 and then the cost will be built to that budget item for parks and recreation. So I've got a motion to approve the attack contract or the attached contract to the agenda, which was vetted and approved by finance and the town attorney. For the cost of the 2022 add the war on taxes, not to exceed $500.
Thank you, Mallory. Any questions? Seems like a no brainer.
I mean, it's eight acres. I mean, can we do, give the man a plaque or something? I mean, this is, I mean.
We will definitely have to name a segment of the greenway after him or something, but it's a, it's a great deal to the town and, and him and Rich worked this out. I don't know, Rich, if you have anything you want to add?
Not really. That pretty well sums it up. You know, Buck Little, that's how he's known. Clarence Little is Buck Little. He's been, he developed in Harrisburg for a long period of time, so he's pretty well known around this area. And, you know, I think he has the town's best interests are at heart. So he's decided to work this out with us at a reasonable amount that's very good for the town.
Does, does this get anywhere near the property that we got? It's on the other side of the railroad tracks.
Property that we got on the.
So when we acquired the expansion to the.
Oh, for the park?
Yeah.
So. There is another property, the railroad track is just north of the public works facility. And then.
You can see it on that right there where our.
Is that that?
That's the, that's the parcel that you're talking about. So this is.
Because we didn't have access previously to get there.
Right.
So would this allow us to have access to get to that?
To get back to the park?
Well, not really. To get back to the park, you're going to have to go across the.
The railroad tracks.
And the railroad said we could build a, a bridge over or a walkway over at the time. That's not what I'm looking at. I just know that we had, at one point, there was this question like a butterfly garden or something like that. But would this allow us to have a path back to that parcel to maybe develop it in some ways, shape or form? Pretty low.
I think so, um. Yeah, th, this is, this will close the last gap of Greenway from Caldwell to the end. So this will, we've, I'm 99% sure we've acquired all the other properties we need. So this, once we have this chunk, we'd be able to construct about a mile of greenway.
Will you be able to expand public works at all on this property?
Um, like branch out into it? It, it's not likely that we would.
I, I doubt it. Most of this property, the, the relief on it is, is. So it's, so it's all on floodplain and or taken up by easement, which is why it's not able to be developed. But it's perfect for recreation property, right? If you were going to have additional mountain bike trails, if you were going to have, you know, any type of greenways and cross country and, and true nature recreation. Eight, eight, this, this eight acres is a significant portion. And it does, as Mallory said, it connects several other town properties. So there, there could be multiple access points. And this is a great location for potential access to the neighborhoods on the south of Back Creek. So they could extend their greenways across the creek and, and attach here and be able to get eventually all the way from. Harmony to Farmington via all these connections.
When it rains, paddleboard.
Perfect.
Awesome.
And I looked earlier, that's, that's, that's what neighborhood is that right there?
Orchard Park.
Orchard Park.
Yep.
Yeah, great job. And great job to the acquisition team.
Yeah.
Very exciting one for sure. This is a, so a good deal for us. And we know we, he developed, you know, a lot of land around Harrisburg, a lot of neighborhoods, so. It's wonderful.
Motion to approve.
So motion on the floor to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second on the floor, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Okay, action items.
The only action item I have is follow up on the design of the fire facility prior to expenditure.
I got a question.
Yes.
And I should have asked earlier, my apologies. Just because we've had a lot of foot traffic in the last few weeks in the area. Is there a way? To validate that a solicitor has it from, how's that? How does that come about? I mean, other than calling and going, hey? Does this XYZ company have a.
Is, is there a way for a resident to validate it? That's a great question. I'm going to look to Lee and, and Zach, I can't put you on the spot quite yet, but I think those are held in the planning department. So I'm not going to, I'm not going to ask, ask Kim what way that goes, but were you familiar with that, they can call into planning and find that out?
Correct, yeah. It's part of planning function, there's a solicitation permit that has to be approved by planning. And they present that person or company with a document that says that they are approved by the town to solicit. And they're required to have that with them whenever they go. So any resident should be able to ask to see that. If they don't have it, then they can contact the sheriff, so, oh, they're going, they can contact the sheriff's office and they can go to further extremes. But that's how it's set up.
They are just, they are to have it with them.
Yes.
Okay. And the reason I asked is we, we had one recently and they said, oh, we have one and I didn't have one. And so I know the sheriff was supposed to validate. The other question that was asked. And I danced. They said, does this give them carte blanche to solicit? And I said, no. I mean, you, neighborhood still have the signs, but generally when you get one of these guys, they're going to sign themselves a sign. So they're going to get the, the freebie on the way out the door. Thanks, keep moving. But this doesn't give them the ability to solicit, it's just in the areas that are not marked. Is that the way I understand that? Is that correct or?
So the part of the approval process is where they will be soliciting as well as what type of product or anything that they're going to be soliciting for. So that should all be submitted in the application and approved by planning.
But I think Ron's question though is that, that does, does or does not supersede no solicitation in neighborhood. Like an HOA might have a no solicitation thing, or us permitting it does not give them, or does give them permission in there. I'm not, I don't know that answer.
It was asked to me and I'm like, I wouldn't take, but the, the first answer is going to be, I never saw it sign.
Right, yeah. It's a Godzilla.
If the HOA has agreed in the whole to have no soliciting, that would only, that would only apply to places where that's allowed.
Okay.
Can't hear you, I can't hear you if you could speak nice. I'll get you an answer on that for sure, but you've heard that it, it does not, but we'll, we'll check our, our permit process and just make sure.
And just that's why they're giving out information, they're not selling anything, but they're giving out information, so. Yeah.
So that's it for the.
See if anybody's ever pulled a per, I don't think anybody's ever actually pulled a solicitation permit. Yeah, I don't think anybody's ever pulled one, so.
And what's that fee when they get signed?
I think it's 25.
Worth the pay.
Yeah.
Thank you. We do have a contract negotiation matter to discuss in closed session this evening. So is there a motion to move into closed session?
Motion to go to closed session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. And we are back in the general session. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting this evening? Is there a second on the floor? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.